Testing now.
Good evening and welcome to the March 25th, 2021 meeting of the Prince George's County Board of Education. Before we begin, I would like to ask everyone to turn off any wireless communication devices and mute your microphones to avoid any technical interference with the meeting. Also, we will be using Zoom's Spanish interpretation services this evening. Board Member Shepherd, would you please make an announcement that Spanish interpretation is available for the meeting by clicking on the globe icon at the bottom of the screen?
Buenas noches a todos. Hay interpretación en español disponible para esta reunión. Puede agarrar la interpretación simultánea en español haciéndole clic en el globo tera- o la parte interior de la pantalla de Zoom y seleccionar en español.
For those who are not able to observe now, this meeting is being recorded and information will be available on our board webpage. Ms. Berkeley, would you please call the roll?
Yes ma'am. Good evening, board members.
Good evening.
Ms. Stafford?
Here.
Mrs. Ahmed?
Here.
Ms. Boozer Struther?
Here.
Mr. Burrows?
Here.
Mr. Harris?
Here.
Ms. Jackson?
Present.
Mr. Montero?
Here.
Mr. Murray? Mrs. Queen?
Present.
Mrs. Shepherd?
Here.
Mr. Thomas? Mr. Valentine?
Here.
Mrs. Williams?
Present.
And Dr. Miller?
Here.
Thank you.
We have a quorum, so we will proceed. This evening, Mrs. Ahmed, a board member Ahmed, will be giving the prayer. Before she begins the prayer, I'd also like for us to take a moment of silent prayer for those victims of the most recent heinous violence from the incidents in the Asian-American community a couple of weeks ago to those that were in a grocery store two days ago that got shot. These were American citizens. So I'd ask everyone to take a moment of silence and then Board Member Ahmed, please proceed with the prayer. Thank you. Amen.
Thank you, Dr. Miller. Oh God, we pray to administer that which is just in all educational policies. Being ever mindful of your guidance steers to action with love, wisdom, and understanding. Ameen. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Board Member Ahmed. Before we go into the adoption of the agenda for March, the March 25th board meeting, being transparent, this is to inform the public that an item for the Academic Achievement Committee was removed from the agenda because there was no action item as a result of that meeting, according to Policy 8100, page 2, number 2. However, a message was sent to the CEO from the chairperson of that committee commending her, the CEO staff, on the, quote, "the amazing collaboration the board and the administration are doing to ensure an excellent education in our school system despite the challenging circumstances caused by the COVID-19 pandemic." A report will be provided next month by the chair if there's action and, and may another report, in the year report. With that, we will move into the adoption of the agenda. May I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So move.
It has been moved to the second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? The ayes have it and the agenda is adopted. Thank you. Next, we will move into the approval of board minute, board meeting minutes for March 5th, special board meeting and March 11th board meeting. May I have a motion to approve the minutes?
A move?
Second.
It has been moved in second. Is there any discussion in reference to those minutes of March 5th and March 11? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? The ayes have it and the agenda is adopted. Report to the chair. We have added new two, two new staff members to the board office. And I believe both of them are on board tonight. Mr. Devin Martin is the board office chief of staff. Mr. Martin? Mr. Martin?
Yes. Can you guys hear me? Yes ma'am. Thank you. I want to thank you guys for the opportunity to serve our wonderful school district in Prince George's County Maryland. Thank you to our CEO and her amazing staff and also our board leadership for the warm welcome. It has been a little over a week. I'm elated at the opportunity to come through and assist in this time and leading our board office. I look forward to greater, and I know greater is on the way, and I look forward to working with each of you all and our stakeholders in the community as well as we better serve them. And I thank you for the opportunity as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. And our newest board policy director, Mr. Brandon Cooper, is he online?
I am. Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to echo Mr. Martin's statements and thank you for the warm welcome from the board members and the CEO and the administration. I look forward to working with you guys to do our job here on the board. Thank you again.
Thank you. Please join me in welcoming them to our office. At this time, I ask that all join me in honoring the memory of the following staff members' families with a moment of silence. Micah Nicholson, student, Gwyn Park Middle School. Ms. Feliciti, Feliciti, Felicitas Marzan, teacher, Fort Foot Elementary. Carol Slater, transportation attendant, Surrattsville Buslot. Robin Wiltonson, former principal of Martin Luther King Junior Middle School. Bai B. Gamje, teacher, Dwight D. Eisenhower Middle School. Merwin Samuels, teacher, Turning Point Academy. Shakola Parker, teacher and reading and language arts department chair, Gwyn Park Middle School. Helen Harvey, food service assistant, Robert Gray Elementary School. Please continue to keep these families in your thoughts and prayers. You should be aware of the following upcoming virtual meetings. English Language Learners, ELL, focus work group will be Thursday, April the 8th, 2021. The board meeting, the next board meeting will be Thursday, April 15th, 2021. The Zoom login details will be posted on the Board of Education's webpage. Please check our webpage and board docs for information about upcoming board meetings. Spring break begins next week. I hope everyone has an enjoyable time. Our next item on the agenda is the report of the Chief Executive Officer, Dr. Monica Golson. Dr. Golson, if you would please present your report.
Thank you and good evening, board members. With spring break approaching, I encourage all employees, students, and families to be aware of the school system's travel guidelines, which reflects CDC recommendations on testing. Even if you are fully vaccinated, the CDC recommends not to travel at this time and to stay home to protect yourself and others from spreading COVID-19. Initial guidance was distributed electronically and was up, and an updated message was sent today. I want to thank everyone who participated in our virtual town halls on academics, health, transportation, and operations this week in preparation for resuming in-person instruction. On Monday, 20,320 people joined us for a telephone town hall on virtual and hybrid learning. And then last night, 17,441 people attended the Health, Transportation, and Operations Town Hall. On Tuesday, April 6th, I'll have an opportunity to speak with students in a town hall moderated by student member of the board Nina Jackson. As we prepare to welcome students back into our schools, we know that many will be relying on our transportation service. Our school bus drivers are already on the road, conducting practice runs. Parents should have received information about our new Stop Finder School Bus app today to help them pinpoint real-time details on locations, pickups, and drop-offs. We have also installed cameras on bus stop arms to enhance safety. The cameras will go live on Thursday, April 8th, when the first set of students return for in-person learning. Drivers who ignore the school bus stop law on or after this date should expect to receive a citation in the mail. Prince George's County Public Schools operates one of the largest bus fleets in the nation, and we are constantly exploring new ways to ensure safe student transportation. The new stop-on cameras are just one way that we're leveraging technology to improve student safety both on and off school buses. I know I don't need to remind our students that spring break will begin from Monday, March 29th through Monday, April 5th. Schools will be closed all of next week and the schools and offices will be closed Friday, April 2nd and Monday, April 5th. I hope everyone has a safe and relaxing break. This concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Golson.
Excuse me, Dr. Miller?
Yes.
It's just a reminder, it's just a reminder that Board Member Shepherd had a moment of personal privilege.
Oh, thank you. Board Member Shepherd?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to take a moment to recognize our silent heroes who go above and beyond to ensure that they meet the needs of our students and their families by providing wraparound services. So I want to tell all my dear social workers in the school system in the county that we appreciate you, we see you, and we are grateful for all the hard work that you do. So on behalf of the school board, our CEO, thank you for all you do, and you are truly our silent heroes. Thank you.
Thank you, Board Member Shepherd. I see Board Member Queen's hand is up. Yes, Board Member Queen?
Yes, I have a question for Dr. Golson, Madam Chair.
Okay.
Okay, so Dr. Golson, I have a question. I noticed I was on a town hall meeting the last time you had, and I did hear them mention on a town hall meeting about the buses having the cameras and all the great things, and I'm happy for it. But I'm just wondering, as a board member, why am I just hearing it on the town hall meeting? Why we don't get that information beforehand?
That actually was a contract that the board approved last school year. I'm sure we probably don't remember just because we have been so inundated with COVID-19 and the pandemic, but it was approved prior to us even going into the pandemic. So I'll forward you that contract again.
Okay, so it was a contract approval, so that means it was completed. So nobody just never come back to tell us this had been completed. It's been installed. We just have to assume when things are completed and installed. I am happy that we have it and I know we need it, but it just seems strange when I, when I hear something the same time the public hears something as a board member. I mean, majority of time what I've noticed for the last two, almost two years now, that's what has been happening. And I just think it would be courtesy as a board member that we would know things a little bit before.
Yep. I'll go back and provide you the date that it was included in the weekly update as well as the date that that contract was approved. When board approves it, we assume that it's done deal and we begin to move forward.
Okay, thank you.
Any more comments before we move into the public comment on the agenda and non-agenda items? Okay, the list of speakers is posted to board docs for the community's reference and speakers will be called in that order. For those who have registered, when you hear your name called, you may begin your testimony and you will have three minutes to present your remarks. The board will not discuss or address your comments. All registered speakers will have three minutes to provide comments. At the sound of the buzzer, speakers may complete that last sentence only. Registered speakers may not relinquish any part of their speaking time to another registered or unregistered individual. Speakers may not address individuals or issues with profanity or derogatory terms. You will be warned once. If you continue, your comments will be terminated. Speakers are encouraged to use titles rather than names. For example, principal, CEO, deputy, superintendent, etc. Your adherence to these guidelines will enable the public participation process to move smoothly. Our first registered speaker for tonight is Ms. Tanya Wingfield with general comments. Ms. Wingfield?
Good evening, distinguished board members and our CEO. I just want to first thank all of our teachers and all of our school-based personnel that are working so hard to make sure kids can get back into in-class schools. And I know COVID is not easy, so for the, all the hard work with the administration and all the school-based kids. My comments go back to the last school board meeting when the board chair shared some information. I'm a person that I do my own research, and so that's what I did. And I must say that I was a little shocked by what I found to corroborate what the board chair had mentioned right in board docs. Couple of things I just want to mention, you know, it's clear by the purchasing manual that the CEO, the CFO, and the director of purchasing, they have the authority as far as authorizing contracts and anything that's negotiated on behalf of the school system. They hold that responsibility. The board gets involved whenever there are contracts that are, that have a dollar threshold that goes beyond their signature authority. And so, understanding that, any contracts made that are contrary to things being done by the CEO, CFO, or the director of purchasing. If it's not, if it's done contrary to that, then Prince George's County Public School cannot be bound by those contracts. They are bored. And so, looking at that and what I'm seeing, this activity of our board. One, on March 1st, to expand the Community Workforce Agreement for capital improvement and budgets. That was a, an ethical violation because there were board members who had received contributions. I found that out for myself. I looked that information up for myself. You voted in the affirmative and you had received political donations from an entity that was involved in the original agreement as well as the extension of the agreement. So that was a violation of board conflict of interest policies. You should have definitely recused yourself from the discussion and from the vote. What was even more disturbing about that action is that I can't find anywhere where there's an approved board CIP action for the removal of asbestos from the schools listed in that original agreement. And then some of the language in that agreement that said, "The board will arrange, the board can require of the contractor, the board reserves the right to review and reject suitable work practices." I mean, where's that expertise of anybody on the board to provide that type of oversight? And then it was disturbing, also what was disturbing was this $565,000 of taxpayer dollars that was spent between June 1st and August 2020 to remove the asbestos from these schools. But again, there's nothing found in board docs. May I finish my, my last sentence?
Yes.
So I, I am filing another appeal with the state to rescind these contracts that were initiated by the board. But of course, the board can go ahead and do this voluntarily and just rescind them themselves. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Ms. Donna Young, general comments. Is Ms. Young available?
Hey, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Madam Chair, CEO, and board member, my name is Donna Young. For those of you who may not a student advocate, a community stakeholder, and have 30-plus years of purchasing experience. I too, like Ms. Wingfield, was concerned with the board meeting on March 25th. I listened to several other meetings and I was shocked and disappointed at the several violations that were transpiring to include violations in CO-MAR or Purchasing Supply Manual best practices and just basic common sense for conflict of interest. Specifically, the sole source of the lobbying contract through a friend who was unemployed. The extension of the 566,000 sole source when there was an IDIQ already available for people but who had been vetted, etc., to remove asbestos. The apparent reading literacy program, which was clearly, clearly being steered as a specific, to a specific vendor, as a board member indicated, he believed he could negotiate that down from 100,000 to 50,000 before the bid was even posted. The apparent steering of the prison workshop training, again, a $50,000 possible purchase without it having been vetted and gone on the bidding, through the bidding process. In my attempt to get clarification of the asbestos contract, I was able to review that contract and I was astonished at some of the information that was in the contract that placed the board susceptible to more loss and lawsuits. Additionally, there was, there is a section about liquidated damages that had no attached value for a asbestos contract. But on your nursing bid, where these are minority, small businesses, you put a liquidated damage, damage amount on their contract for $1,000 per day. But this larger company had no, no such information, which you know could potentially cause them to go out of business and it was a shocking amount.
Ms. Young, you're, you're fading.
Oh, I'm sorry. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. The, the, on the MBEs at $1,000. And then in, in my scene of a video about a Transfinder Pro contract for the transportation system, I've looked for that contract. I can't find that, where that was bid at anywhere. Not on Maryland Marketplace, the same thing with the asbestos contract. I can't locate where this bid was put out for a competitive offer. So what is my point? Okay. When did the board become part of purchasing? All contracts are supposed to come through the purchasing office. The board is not purchasing and supply. And the purpose of purchasing supplies to keep us, meaning you all, from getting us in trouble and losing money to prevent fraud. These contracts did not go through the proper channels, and I wondered why the administration is not... Can I finish my statement?
Yes, you may finish your statement.
Thank you. I am wondering why the administration is allowing contracts to go through without any scrutiny from the purchasing and supply. And you know that because they haven't been signed by the purchasing director who signs all contracts. Please investigate this and look at any other contracts that have entered, that have come through the board. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Young. Next, Jennifer Shepherd, swing space needs related to future construction. Ms. Shepherd? Jennifer Shepherd?
Yes ma'am. Good morning, good evening, board members and school system leaders. I am here as a parent of a seventh grader at Hyattsville Middle School, which is scheduled to be demolished this summer and rebuilt over the next two years. I would like to present a concern of educational equity regarding a decision that was made last week to put the wishes of a highly-resourced specialty school ahead of the needs of a less advantaged school, a decision that will have further negative impact on the county through the next decade. Hyattsville Middle School families have been waiting for months to hear the final plans about where our children will be sent during the rebuild. Last Wednesday, the PGCPS administration shared their plan for Hyattsville students to go to school in the Seabrook School Building that currently houses the Robert Goddard Montessori School. This plan would unfortunately require moving the 490 Robert Goddard students to the Meadowbrook Elementary School in Bowie. The Seabrook building would be large enough to accommodate Hyattsville's 860 students during the rebuild and could continue to serve as swing space, housing future schools that will need to relocate during much-needed construction in the coming years. Administrators presented the overwhelming pros of this plan and included specific improvements that would be made to the Meadowbrook site to make sure it would be adequate for the Robert Goddard Montessori program. Less than 24 hours later, following outcry from Robert Goddard families who had the support of some members of this school board, the PGCPS administration reverted back to a plan they had considered previously. This plan leaves Robert Goddard in place at Seabrook, sends half of Hyattsville Middle School's students there to share the building with them, and sends the other half of the middle school students to the Meadowbrook site in Bowie. Can you imagine trying to run one unified school with its creative and performing arts program, its significant ESOL and special education staff, its honors programs, elective, sports, etc. in two locations nowhere near each other? Hyattsville Middle already has enough challenges, including high rates of poverty and mobility. To add insult to injury, the busing will be piggybacked so that the students going to the Meadowbrook site will have up to 68-minute bus rides since they will drop off some of their friends in Seabrook first. No sound instructional rationale was given for the change. So it is highly confusing and concerning that our school is scheduled to be split apart simply because of the political influence of a more advantaged specialty program. This decision does not fit with the one PGCPS vision of our highly-capable CEO. PGCPS school leadership and the school board need to find ways to manage growth in sensible ways that do not punish children and hard-working staff nor pit neighbors against each other like we are clawing for scraps. I ask you all to read the letter that you were sent this week by the PTAs of six concerned schools representing 3,500 students and do whatever you can to have this decision reversed in the name of equity.
Thank you, Ms. Shepherd. Next, Michelle Clark, distance learning and reopening.
Good evening, everyone. I wanted to talk to you today about a few concerns that I have with the reopening and the current distance learning. One of them is, as you know, I'm a special educator and early childhood center. And I will say first off, our PPE is fantastic at the early childhood center. I have, I could dress for surgery in what we have been provided. However, I'm hearing from resource teachers who are special educators in the typical schools that they don't have access to the same types of PPE. And just because of the special needs students that, that they deal with, they would appreciate the same consideration that we are getting. So they, they don't have as much access to masks. They don't have the face shields or the gowns and everything like, like we do. I mean, like I said, I could be a surgeon at my building, so you guys have done a great job with us. I also heard from another member today that they had an incident on, I believe she said Monday, where she went to get the vaccine and she had an adverse reaction. And the vaccination clinic ended up being taken to the hospital and was on, under doctor's care for most of this week. And in this particular case, she was told by absence management that she needed to use her personal leave in order to recover from this, which I understand she doesn't have COVID, so it doesn't fall under COVID leave. It's kind of, it's kind of a fine line, but I wanted to bring it to your attention because she felt the need to be back at work by Wednesday because she didn't want to use up all of her leave, even though she still is not feeling right. And that just seems a little bit off to me when she's doing what she needs to do to try and stay on board as a teacher and be safe. And then the, the other thing that goes along with that is I'm a little bit confused about the, the rules on exposure. If you're exposed... If you're exposed at work to a COVID case within six feet for more than 15 minutes, it says in the reopening plan and in some other documents I've read that, that you should be quarantined for a period of seven to 10 days. Yet, unless you have a positive test for COVID itself, that is not covered under COVID leave. So that employee would have to take their own personal leave, which also goes back into people who are coming back from possible vacation over spring break. And I would just recommend that, Dr. Golson, as you pe, as you guys are thinking about this, that in some of those circumstances, allowing people to work from home would be very helpful. They can still get the job done, and that way everybody is safe and nobody goes to further, um, further disease at work. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Clark.
Have a good evening.
You too, uh, dear. Um, Ms. Yvette Reyes, distance learning and grading.
Uh, Dr. Miller, I do not show that she is in, in the attendee pool. However, the next speaker, Teresa Dudley, is available.
Okay, well, we'll move to Ms. Dudley. Ms. Dudley, on the reopening. Ms. Dudley.
I'm here. I didn't realize I was going to be called so fast. Thank you so much, um, Madam Chair and members of the board and, um, Dr. Golson. Um, I have submitted testimony concerning, um, the concerns of Prince George's County Educators Association. Um, in our testimony, there are information about the six mitigating factors that the CDC has asked us to be in compliance with. Um, we are on the borderline of the orange and the red for all of the categories. And in two of the categories, we're actually in the red for reopening. And so we're asking for the middle schools and the high schools to stay at distance learning because in that zone, that could, that is still possible. The middle schools and the high school transmission, um, issues are very high because you have, our, our middle and high schools are overcapacity and the, the, the SAP is rising, so to speak, and it's going to be hard to keep those, that six-foot distancing, social distancing. Many of our schools, um, have not received their MERV filters or the ventilation systems are even too old for a MERV system. And, um, all of these things I'm sharing with you, we have gotten reported back from our members because we had our members survey their schools out and, and report the information back to us. There have been sev, many incidents of people not wearing their PPEs in the buildings. We have, um, there's a lot of concern about COVID and schools. Um, for example, there was, um, someone at Crossland had COVID and the staff over there was concerned about where, who, where, where's the area they should have avoided? There was no, uh, maintenance staff in the building on that Friday, and then everybody was wondering, should they go get tested? Should they go get quarantined? And there wasn't a clear, clear indication on what people should do. So of course, the anxiety level is very high amongst educators at this point. The anxiety continues when we talk about who is going to be doing the testing in the building. Um, when some of our schools don't even have nurses, and I know they're bit, looking for, um, contract nurses to be in there. However, I also know that at sometimes the secretary, um, or whoever gets anointed to be the nurse for the day, and that is absolutely unacceptable, especially in this age of COVID. When we are looking at, um, some of the, um, quick changes that have been made, um, I just got a, uh, email today that came out that said that there's going to be a third-quarter work amnesty period for students, where students can now turn in late work from as far back as January. Um, and the teachers are expected to grade this. We've got to do better. We, we've started talking with, at the negotiated agreement. I would ask that the letter and the, the issues that PGCEA has brought before you are considered, middle and high school not going back, and making sure that the testing is done in the buildings and all of those six mitigating factors are in place. Thank you.
Madam Chair, you muted. Thank you. Karen Cochran, Karen for Kids, Inc., private duty nursing. Is Ms. Cochran in?
We have someone listed under that telephone number, but that may not be her. She's not responding. Uh, if she's not responding, then though, that will conclude all of the speakers for this evening.
Thank you. We also have a community member who will provide written testimony, which will be posted on Board Docs, and that is Leah Higgins. And in reference to the swing space for, uh, HMS Hy, Hyattsville Middle School. Please review this testimony at your convenience. Now we'll move to the consent agenda. Dr. Golson, would you please introduce items 4.1, 4.5?
Yes. Items 4.1 through 4.5 requires board approval of proclamations commemorating the following in Prince George's County Public Schools: Earth Day, Mathematics and Statistics Awareness Month, School Library Month, National Autism Awareness Month, and Week of the Young Child, the week of April 12th through the 16th, 2021. Thank you.
May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Don't move. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Uh, I...
Oppose? Hearing none? All those, uh, um, the eyes have it. Uh, let's see, um, next, if there are any items to be considered separately, are there any motions, discussion, and vote for each item considered separately? The budget consent agenda, uh, Dr. Golson, please introduce items 5.1 to 5, uh, 5.3.
Items 5.1 through 5.3 requires board approval of the April 2021 expenditure requirement, fiscal year 2021 financial review, and categorical changes, and ratification of addendum to Local 2250 negotiated agreement for FR 2020 through 2022.
May I have a motion and second to approve the other items on the budget consent agenda?
Don't move. Second.
Um, I need seven votes. So all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? The budget, uh, consent agenda is approved. Now let's address the items that are to be considered separately. Um, may I have, are there any separate ones?
Uh, Madam Miller?
Yes. Ms. William?
You need to have, uh, Dr. Golson, uh, present those, those items.
Did you have any separate ones, Dr. Golson?
Are you talking about items 5.1 through 5.3? I just presented them and then the board member pulled them.
Yes.
No one wanted them separately.
Okay, thank you. Okay, then we will move to, um, the next item, 6.0, non-consent agenda. They are none. Follow-up items from the previous meeting of the board will be posted upon receipt. Now I may have a motion to approve actions taken in executive session. Well, I can't ask for a motion because we didn't have an executive session, so I have to move forward. Um...
Um, if I could, Dr. Miller, just a point of clarification. So the, uh, at the last, uh, board meeting, the board had voted to conclude this executive session. So there is one motion that could be taken to approve the actions from the March 11th executive session.
Okay.
So moved?
Second.
It has been moved in second to approve actions taken in the executive session on March 11th, 2021 as follows. To receive a report from the CEO regarding the administration of the school system, to discuss personnel matters regarding the appointment, employment, and removal of certain employees and officials over whom we have jurisdiction, including specific and individual board staff employees. Receive legal advice regarding appeals and a contractual matter to discuss internal audit investigative proceedings. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any nays? The eyes have it. The actions taken in the executive sess, session on March 11th are confirmed. May I have a motion and second to approve actions taken? Well, we didn't do anything today, so I can't move there. So with that being said, uh, we can move on to adjourn. May I have a motion to adjourn?
Move.
Is this second?
Second.
Local.
It has been moved in second. Any discussion before? Hearing none? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Meeting adjourned. Thank you so much for your time this evening.
Good evening.
Bye-bye.
Bye.
Good night.
Good night.